Telephonic and virtual options. For public viewing and participation. With that, I'll call this meeting to order. And is Krista gonna call the roll?
Yes, I'm online. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Councilmember Soltis.
Here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Hartzak.
Here.
Councilmember Hardjauhausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
I am present.
We have a quorum, your honor.
Thank you, Krista. Everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for that. Next is approval of the agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes, man.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Thank you. We have a public communication tonight. The RE plus presentation and pledge, Amy Okerlander with King County Solid Waste. Welcome, Amy. Thanks for being here.
No, it's not.
Now is it?
Yeah, there we go.
Great. And it looks like we've got the presentation up. So I'm Amy Okerlander, Government Relations Administrator for King County Solid Waste. And thank you for having King County here a second time this cycle this year to discuss RE Plus. We're gonna do just a quick update for you and give you an update on our activities and the pledge. So thank you again for having us. Just as a quick reminder, RE Plus is about rethinking, reinventing, reencycle, recycling. So anything you can add a RE to is RE Plus. Not sure if this one is working. Oh, there we go. All right. And so. So of course, the mission is reducing the single use. We're using everything that can be, recycling what's left, renewing communities, and rethinking what's possible. And as another reminder, RE Plus is really a call to action. If you recall, these in line with the King County Strategic Climate Action Plan, King County Code, the King County Equity and Social Justice Strategic Plan, the K4C commitment, as well as the Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan. So where are we leading? As a reminder, King County is leading the country in curbside recollection of non-organic recyclables, commercial, construction and demolition recycling and yard waste collection. But our recycling rates have remained relatively flat since 2010. So our RE Plus fast start actions again are focusing on plastic and paper, which is 26% of what ends up in the landfill, organics, which is 28%, and those are the primary focuses and products that we're looking to divert right now. So since we met with you last July, the RE Plus program officially launched at the end of January. So it was a huge body of work for our team to pull together the entire strategic plan. It's very complex. It seems simple on the outside, but the amount of research and data gathering and work that our team did was really fantastic. To pull together the strategic plan and start moving forward towards the future. So what have we been doing since we came to Covington? And I will note as well, the city of Covington was the first city to have a RE Plus presentation. So that was a very nice and positive start to these presentations. Right now, we are working on surveys and more. We completed some countywide RE Plus polling over the summer, which actually showed is really strong support for the RE Plus program in King County. We also have launched an organic survey that has gone out to your city managers and asked a request to share on your social media, trying to get information about what people like and don't like about organics, what service they have, where they would like the county to go. And then we are also initiating our comprehensive plan update work. That work is starting internally right now and will become external in the near future. At the legislative level, we were actively advocating for the RAP Act, which was House Bill 1131, which was the a huge extended producer responsibility bill and the biggest, which included a bottle bill, as well as other components to put responsibility on the producers of products rather than the consumers at the end and costing, making it the expenses higher to go into the landfill. We also have been issued our RE Plus circular economy grants. At the, the first round of grants that came out last year was focused on CDOs, nonprofit organizations. Those grants were publicly announced on Monday in a press release from the executive. And I'd be happy to send that out to council. There's a lot of fantastic programs in reusing product and trying to get items out of the waste stream altogether, which is really fantastic. In April, we are going to be launching our city RE Plus grant program. And so minimum grant award will be $20,000. We have a $300,000 to $400,000 available. And we'll be encouraging cities to join together to apply for grants. And this will be. The activities that'll be eligible are things that are in line with the RE Plus grant program. The guidelines are currently being finalized. And then just to give you kind of a quick update on polling. Before folks learned about the RE Plus program, support countywide for the program was at 63%. After learning more, it went up to 88%. And when we test some of the program statements, the highest scoring statement was constituents really wanting harmonized rules for recycling and composting throughout the county. You can go from one zip code to another and have completely different rules and how you recycle colors of bins and all of those types of things. And what we hear consistently is people get confused and they want to be able to recycle the same way wherever they go. So after, oops, I had that slide in there double, but reinforcing the point that after this survey comes out, the countywide support for the program really increases to 88%, which is phenomenal. And a real testament, I think, to community desires to move this work forward. So we've also been quite busy doing city presentations. So if you see on the far left hand of the slide, those are all the communities that we've presented to. And actually, as of tonight, we can move Maple Valley, Normity Park, and Yow Point to the completed side. And obviously, we're doing a second presentation to you tonight and working on getting the other counties, other cities on board. So what can cities do to help? Which is why I'm here tonight. We have what we call the RE Plus pledge. And it's similar to the K4C interlocal agreement, although it's not an interlocal agreement. This is a high level agreement of principles of the RE Plus program. It'll help the county gauge where support is in the cities, allow us to know where, what cities are doing. So we'll do a lot of information gathering and help us provide support to the cities as we move forward in this very extensive process. And then to date, we have pledges approved from the cities of Shoreline, Woodinville, Fied Hills, Palmie, Carnation, Newcastle. Seem to be on the schedule for Maple Valley, as well as several other east side cities. And so why sign the pledge? City RE Plus grant eligibility aligns at the King County K4C, the Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan, the SCAP and more, shows an alignment of goals between the cities and the county, and will provide new opportunities for city and county coordination. It also demonstrates your commitment of zero waste to your community. Being able to say that you signed the pledge says that you have some, some level of teeth into this process. It also will bring focus on key elements contributing to climate change and a whole lot more. That concludes my presentation.
Great. Well, thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Just also, you have a minute for questions? If council has any questions? Council have any question? Jennifer?
You had mentioned some of the legislation that could potentially be used to put the burden on the producers versus, you know, our, you know, essentially the cities and followers of our ways. What are, what are specific ways that we look to do that through legislation?
So the RAP Act that was introduced this year is very comprehensive. It was a 140-page bill. So part of what it would have done is create a bottle deposit system like the state of Oregon has, where you would take in your bottles and just like the old aluminum candies, you pay a deposit when you purchased the bottle and get it back when you return it. Another thing that it does is it would require the producers to pay for some of that recycling and that end cycle waste management at the outset. In theory, that with those additional costs upfront, there could be less, fewer costs on the backend for consumers. Because as you take that waste out of the bin, you're able to move to a smaller bin. That said, you know, in Canada and other places where legislation like this has gone through, they did not see any kind of measurable increase in prices, but they saw recycling and plastic use in products go down. So one of the really nice things about the RAP Act is that it would have really encouraged producers to start to use less packaging because you're paying for that. And, and really, that's a community desire as well. So it's a very complex component bill. There is one law in place that was really the origin of EPR in Washington State, the paint care bill. So now that you can go and recycle your paint, the producers are paying for that recycling upfront. So you're not paying for it on the backend and it stays out of the landfill as much as possible. This year, there's also another bill going through that would do battery EPR. That has legs. It's continuing to move for the legislature and we'll see how that goes. But I think we all know as more EV vehicles and electric products, battery powered products come on the market, that creates a really hazardous situation in making sure that those materials are handled properly on the backend. So that helps moving forward as well. Washington State is the only state on the West Coast that does not have EPR for plastic.
All right. Thank you, Amy. Now before us, you, we have the RE plus pledge. I know this is the first time council has seen it tonight. So if council, which is there's consensus to sign it. I can sign it or we can bring it back to a future council meeting in two weeks.
Yeah.
Bring it back in two weeks.
Bring it back in two weeks. Okay. Gives council a chance to read it and understand it. So. Amy, thank you very much. And so we'll bring it back in two weeks and then once it's signed, you need a wet copy or can we just scan it and send it to you?
You can just scan it and email it.
You don't want to come back and see us again?
I'm sure I'll come back.
You're, you're driving all the way from Dubal, so I know that's a long way. So.
Yes, I'll be happy. And actually, once you do approve the pledge, we're providing plaques to every city that does. So you can showcase that and the desire that you may or along with a thank you letter from the King County Executive. So be coming back to present that as well.
Okay. Well, Amy, always a pleasure seeing you and thank you very much for being here tonight.
You too. Thank you, Mayor.
Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Regan, if we can put that on, if we have room in two weeks to do it. Thank you. All right. Next up is our first of two public comment. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law RCW 42 dot 17A dot 555. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in city hall and or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting is prohibited. And seeing I have sign up here, Sean Penwell. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Sean Penwell. I work for Peachtree County Regional Fire Authority, a newly promoted deputy chief. As you all know, recently Chief Morris retired and now Chief Carson is our new fire chief. That meant there was some movement. I got to be the benefit of that movement. And with that came new responsibilities. So I am now the new liaison to the city of Covington. For years, I think it's been Pat Pollock. I am not Pat Pollock and you won't see him anymore. But I'm happy to be here. I worked, when I was a captain, I worked at Station 75 for several years. So I've run lots of calls here, familiar with the Covington area, really enjoyed the time that I spent there. So I just want to introduce myself. So when you see me, you know who I am. I'm the liaison to the city of Covington. If you have any issues that have to do with fire service, I'm the one that can help navigate that and get you answers to questions or problems or any kind of concerns that you have. So I just wanted you to see my face and know who I am. And you'll be seeing me every two weeks, either in a seat or virtually.
Perfect. Yeah, congratulations.
Yes, I appreciate the opportunity and look forward to working with all of them.
Great. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience wishing to address council tonight? Is there anybody online wishing to address council tonight? All right. Seeing nobody raise their hand, we will have a second opportunity for public comment at the, towards the end of our meeting. With that, let's move into approval of consent agenda, which is item C1 through C6. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Next up is new business item number one. Consider an appointment to the Arts Commission. Does council wish to take action tonight? Debbie?
Sweet child. Just a moment. I would like to nominate. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm missing your last name here. Balla. Ballhoff, excuse me. To join our Arts Commission.
And Christina, you seconded?
Yes.
Well, first off, Debbie, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. Thank you. As a new resident to Covington, she's come in with blazing, all guns fired. She's ready to jump in and help. She said that she loves our community. She wants art to be seen through, well, she's seen art through all of her life. And she wants our residents to see what Covington has to offer through the art. Lots of different types of art. She's, she's not tied to just murals, although she painted beautiful murals. But she just wants really to open things up to our community such as integrating the feeling of being outside, even if you're driving down 272nd. She's got an outstanding background, kind of blew us all away with her background of landing on aircraft carriers. She won't have to do that on the Arts Commission, but she does have a great background in leadership, organizational skills, master of knowledge. She's great at dealing with people. And I think she would be a great asset to our Arts Commission and to being an ambassador of our city.
Thank you. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure. I'll be short. I was incredibly impressed with Bo. The level of left brain and right brain working together to create and not just create on paper, not, though she doesn't just paint on paper. I mean, like, we've got to see some of the art in the 25 minutes. I feel like if I'm so impressed with you in 25 minutes, I cannot wait to see how much more intricate and deep your creativity goes. One of the things she mentioned and when referring to art was as a health check to the community. I really like that. I don't know, maybe we can incorporate that somehow into the future, but, and whether it's for art or beyond. But I really like the concept of art being a health check and where it stands is kind of where our community is. I'm excited. I hope that you get to incorporate as much of your creativity as possible in Covington. Thank you.
Christina, anybody else pushing to speak for against the motion?
So. As someone whose art experience is very limited and as someone who has had issues with art in the past, just because I have a thing, I, I know what I like. I think everyone else should like that, but just my philosophy and my kids disagree with it all the time. I today said, saw the Arts Commission is going to go into a brand new direction, which is going to be a direction that I never saw it going because Bo is going to bring a new thought process to arts and it's going to bring the city to a new forefront because she said that we have lots of natural beauty to the city, but adding the art to that natural beauty, I think is going to be a great thing. And I think she's going to be a great leader in bringing us that direction. And I am emphatically voting yes for her to be on the Arts Commission.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else wish to speak for or against? All right. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Bo Ballhoff to fill position number one for a partial term replacement on the Arts Commission with a term expiring May 31st, 2025. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Bo. Next up is agenda item number two. Consider appointment to the youth council adult leader position. Council wish to take action tonight. Go.
I move to appoint Chuck Ijadi to a two-year term as an adult leader on the Covington Youth Council.
Your second. Been moved and seconded to appoint Chuck Ijadi to a two-year term as an adult leader on the Covington Youth Council. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
So one of our questions is how has, how have you been guiding the youth council rather than directing them? And his answer is, I'm just there to help them stay, basically stay the course. He's not, they're not there for him. He's there. He's not, the kids are not there for him. He is there for them. Right. And that way to make sure that they can continue to grow the city for that, for youth, those middle schoolers and those high schoolers. And he is, and he's just impressed by how well they are doing. And can't wait to see all the wonderful things they're going to do, not just on this youth council, but in the future. And I can just see how excited he is to continue working with the youth of our city.
Thank you, Joe. Beth, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, please. Joe mentioned the big, the big one is that he mentioned he is not there for them, but they're, he's there for them and not the other way around. And it was very evident that he's, he's led a very active life. He knows about raising and nurturing youth. And while he has certainly every opportunity to use his voice, he wants them to use their voice. And that's what he's encouraging them to do. He also mentioned he wants to be able to introduce them to the world and what they need to do to be the change and to give them that, that, that courage and that experience to make, make Covington suitable for future generations. So that was really impressive.
Anybody else wish to speak for against the motion? Right. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Chuck Ijadi to a two-year term as an adult leader on the Covington Youth Council, expiring February 28th, 2025. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Chuck. Next up is new business item number three. Consider appointments to the Human Services Commission. Council wish to take action tonight. Jennifer?
I would like to appoint Sarah Parker to fill position number two on the Human Services Commission with a term expiring March 31st, 2026.
Your second. Okay. Been moved and seconded to appoint Sarah Parker to fill position number two. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. Sarah has been serving on the Human Services Commission. So if appointed, it would be a reappointment tonight. She has lots of great ideas. I loved the, the idea to have regular questionnaires going out to residents rather than just, you know, like the one survey we did a few years ago. I feel like that's, that's potentially outdated information. And she really wants to explore all of the opportunities to really get the word out. So people can access the resources that we're making available. The city of Covington doesn't just fund local organizations. The city has a team and a staff member and a whole commission dedicated to increasing services to all of our residents. And like getting that out there is an important message. And Sarah and the rest of the team, they're just doing great work. So I really recommend her for the position.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure, shortly. I agree with everything Jennifer said. I was really impressed just with her wealth of knowledge on what's going on in, you know, the deep levels of, of the Arts Commission. She had an answer to every question besides the questions that, even on suggestions, she already had an answer. So that was really cool. I don't think I expected that. And I also agree with her, her passion to, to learn how to communicate with the public, to understand what they want and to really understand where they will go. And she also mentioned a commission fair and I am fully in favor of that for our residents to, to be more aware and again to, to have a location where they can find out more and place their passions into serving the community.
Thank you, Christine. Anybody else pushing to speak for next to me? Beth?
Yeah, I thought she also brought up a very interesting concept about often when, when funds are picked and they're allocated to a particular person in need, it's often at the crisis level, which is important, but also that there is a higher of, of spending and often there are people that are just above the verge of, of crisis. And if we can prevent that, it is often a lot less expensive than if they, they get down to that level. So I just, it was just an interesting way of being very mindful of the funding and how it impacts Covington residents and how we, how we can continue to, to serve people, but also get the most out of the dollars for our tech. So I thought that was really insightful.
Thank you, Beth. Anybody else wish to speak for against? Been moved and seconded to appoint Sarah Parker to fill position number two on the Human Services Commission with a term expiring March 31st, 2026. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Sarah. Council wish to take me for the action.
Like, I move to appoint Jessica Berkland to fill position number five on the Human Services Commission with a term expiring March 31st, 2026.
Second.
Now everybody's.
Jennifer, would you like to speak to your?
Yes, yes. I was trying to give somebody else a term. We have such great candidates tonight. Like it's, I feel like all of us could say something amazing about everyone. Jessica is, went from a member to vice chair to a chair. And already we've seen some changes in their ways of working. They've changed up the day of the meeting. She did not mention, but we heard at their last report that, and we were really giving them kudos for having each of the members take turns giving the reports. I think that's fabulous idea. It really gives them that interaction with council that, that they said they appreciate. I am not being pompous, I swear, when I assume that they, they want to hear from us, but and has demonstrated a resiliency working through this past few years on human services. It has not been an easy job. And yes, you know, there were some ARPA things that made life easier, but really they have been seeing all of it face to face. And so Jessica, as a reappointment, would be a strong candidate to lead the team.
Thank you, Jennifer. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
I was wondering which one, though, the three of us got.
I heard you first.
Okay. I, I think my, it's not what she said, so, so to say, but what she was passionate about in human services and making sure that the community was served is what really stood out to me. And it's not just serving one sector of the community. It was serving the entire community as a whole. And that's what I really. And that's what I really got from her interview and how she felt that human services can be helpful to that. And understanding that the funding cycle and what it's going to be, but I agree with Jen, with Jennifer that ARPA funding made those funding cycles a lot easier the last couple of years. But I think that the way that she's been leading that team recently with the, making sure that everyone's able to be to those meetings, changing the date, the, the day of the week, the, the week that the meetings are at even. Making sure that the whole team is there and has that full buy-in. I think it's going to make our Human Services Commission better. And I'm one of those guys who has at certain times when we were cutting the budget, even said we needed to cut their funding. And I really am hopeful that we don't have to ever have that conversation again.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Alright, been moved and seconded to appoint Jessica Kirkland to fill position number five on the Human Services Commission with a term expiring March thirty first, two thousand twenty six. All those in favor state aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Jessica. Well, that concludes our new business. Looking at future agenda items, please note that next Monday, March twentieth is our joint meeting with the Kent School District Board and Superintendent. And then we also, our next council meeting will be on March twenty eighth, a joint meeting with the Youth Council at six and our regular meeting at seven. Does council have anything else they'd like to see on a future agenda? Alright, seeing none, let's move into council staff comments. Let's start with Chief. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I started, some of the citizens of our city started the Citizens Academy last Thursday. We are hosting it at our station this Thursday, which we need to get a couple more papers and chairs, which will get brought over, but good. It's been good. We had our mayor pro 10, Sean showed up, gave some remarks.
Two nights in a row?
Two nights in a row. Somebody didn't have the right day.
Wasn't me.
My apologies. We are currently doing a shoplift deficit with Coles. Right now, when I came back from my car, we still have not had any shoplifters. So that's good, I guess. Or they're not finding, I don't know, but I, I would prefer to think nobody's shoplifting, so it'd be good. A note about our community care specialist, we are working through his gelato program, which we will be able to use to make, where other people will be able to use to make referrals into him. Our hope is to provide that to the library and some few other places that would be able to refer directly to Darren as opposed to having the police do that portion of it. Because we'd like to gather as many peoplemen as we can. And the library has said there's a need and there's other places to have that need. So that's pretty close to being ready, but we're still working through the software because that's a pretty big build on there. And lastly, one of our Covington officers is promoting to sergeant as of Saturday. So we are losing him today's last day. We may get him back later this summer, though, which would be awesome for me. So we're very hopeful, but Aaron Job, I, I, he's been here a long time. He's done a great job. I'm sad to see him go, but he will make a great sergeant. So that's it for me.
Thanks, Adam. Is Ethan online? Ethan, Dawn?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Selena.
Hi, good evening, Council. I just have one thing I want to share with you. The comprehensive plan docket has officially opened. We opened that today and that's going to run for about sixty days and that'll end in June. The purpose of the docket is we do this kind of annually as an effort to solicit any kind of comprehensive plan amendments that we may want, that the public may want, or other agencies may want to see in our comprehensive plan. This year is a little bit different in that we're going to open this. And then if we receive any, we will then decide which ones we want to move forward this calendar year. Or if we get items from folks who also assess that that's better served as part of our overall comprehensive plan update. So just know that we will, we are anticipating one that will be coming actually from our department. But, so we are anticipating that one, but we will be working with them and you as a council and the planning commission as we move through the docketting process.
Thank you, Selena. Casey. You're on mute.
Better? Sorry about that.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if you've gotten a chance yet to read Regan's weekly update, but when you do, you'll notice that our REIT excise, our real estate excise taxes took a dip in February. We're starting to see some of the effects from the higher mortgage interest rates. But I just wanted to, to remind you that we've had such a fantastic last couple of years that we have enough funding to pay for our debt service for all of this year and all of next year and still have about two hundred thousand dollars left over just with the funds we have in our pocket today. So I just wanted to kind of rest your mind a little bit when you see that those dollars are coming, going down a little bit, that we're, we're still doing good stuff. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey.
I have a question. If, if we have the money to pay this year and next year on debt services, can we pay ahead? Or is there going to be some penalties on that?
No, we can't pay ahead, but it, it looks great, especially for, you know, any advi, any financial folks that take a look at our financial statements and see those reserves for us. So it helps with our ratings and things of that nature. So it, it's great to have those in the reserves.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark.
Thank you, Mayor Wagner. There's no executive session tonight and I have no further report.
Thank you, Mark. Regan.
Good evening, Council. I just wanted to point out that the Student Art Show is back and that's super exciting. As, as most of you know, some of you may not, but we pair students' art with local businesses and here at City Hall, and it's a wonderful thing that lasts for the entirety of this month. And so we're excited to have, have that back. We talked a lot about arts tonight, so I thought that was important to bring up. And that's all that I have.
Thanks, Regan. Krista, thanks for joining us from afar.
Hello. Yes, I'm joining you from Stevenson, Washington, where I'm attending the Washington Municipal Clerks Association Conference this week. So thanks for letting me join remotely. I really don't have anything other than that. I'm just continuing my education this week.
Well, and congratulations on getting your, I forget what you just received, your.
Certified municipal clerk.
Thank you. Congratulations. Well deserved.
Thank you very much.
Joe.
Never know which way he's going to go these days. For, for years, he was. So today, as many know, I am going back to school to earn my bachelor's in secondary education to teach history. And today I got to teach my very first lesson in history. It was all of fifteen minutes, but I got to do it and it was not as stressful as I thought it was going to be. And I, I got great feedback from my mentor teacher. And it's, I get to do it again next week, but it'll be longer than fifteen minutes next week. So I'll let you guys all know how, if I'm dragging in here in two weeks, you'll know how well that, that. Secondly, and this is the last thing I'm going to end with today, we need to be advocates for mental health. I say this as a friend of mine for the last twenty-five years just lost his eighteen-year-old daughter to suicide. I have, it was, she tried to take back the decision, but unfortunately, the pills she ingested told her that's not an option. We focus so much on getting help to our residents. We focus on getting help to those that we love. We focus on getting help to those that we don't even know because it's the right thing to do. But we need to be advocates at all levels for those who can't get the help, those who can't afford the help, those who can afford the help. We need to advocate for mental health services in this community and in this county. I am tired of every year hearing of high school students, college students, and adults our ages taking their lives because they cannot get the help they, they need or the help they're being getting isn't good enough. I have a son who has been diagnosed with depression and anxiety and is on medication himself. And luckily we can get him help, but I am worried every day that that help isn't good enough. And I think that we as a council, we as a community, need to be making that a focus. And I, I want to say right now, I promise to make that the focus for the next fifty years of my life. It's making sure that we are providing mental health services to our community, to our friends and to our family. Because that's important, because we cannot take another day of losing people too soon. With that, I'm going to drink some coffee and calm down.
Thank you, Joe. I am right there with you, fully committed. You know it. I've had some similar outbursts, but it's necessary. I mean, we had a council member die by suicide. You remember, that's how I got in the seat. Like, it's, it's real. We talk about it. We skirt around it. But especially as electeds, it's, we have more power than the average bear and we have the commitment to every average bear and below average bear and above average bear to, to really actually do something. So thank you for saying all of that, Joe. To lighten things up, I would like to say happy pie day.
Why didn't we have pie?
Happy pie day. Hopefully people have pie at home. If not, swing by the grocery store and buy some pie. Joe, buy some pie. Pizza pie, it is a right, it can be a pot pie. And I was thinking about it. It was one of our interview candidates was saying how much they love Covington. And we all love Covington, but I really, I wanted to share, you know, I was one of the groups I'm in, some of you know, with the cookies. And we were at Covington Fred Meyer this weekend. And even given the economy and everything that's going on, it's not just, yeah, people still buy Girl Scout jerseys, although they do. But what was really refreshing and amazing about our community is how many people just made donations. They literally were just donating cash, donating boxes of cookies. It was so surprising to me how generous people continue to be to their community. And so I just wanted to share that, like, we're, we're doing, we're doing good.
Well, I'll just add on to what Jennifer said about the, the generosity of our residents always blows me away too. When we have food drives and pet food drives and when, when the ask is there, people step up. So that's one of the things I love about our, our city. And I've heard several stories this week, only, only in the last two days actually, of so many kids in our schools not being able to get mental health services that they need. There must be a shortage with, at the counselor level. But I know that there are even parents on, on council who struggle with children not being able to get the help they need within the school district. So I, I agree with Joe, we need to keep that as front and center. Just as an update, I think everyone heard on the news late last month that the people that were getting what's called SNAP benefits, that's the new language for what used to be food stamps, was being cut back because during COVID, people who were, let's say, getting three hundred dollars a month, were, were now getting five hundred because of ARPA funds. And people that were on the fringe and hadn't qualified before were then qualifying. And so maybe they were getting three hundred dollars a month. And all of that funding ended. So as of March first, many residents in Covington have been hugely impacted by a reduction in their ability to buy groceries at the grocery store. And it isn't just Covington. I heard on the news last night, it's, you know, it's statewide. This was a state funding decision that ended on, on March first. So the storehouse has been heavily impacted and so volunteers and works with the storehouses, she knows this. Not only the people coming in, but the people that are getting food delivered to them through United Way DoorDash program. And now we're also seeing an increase in the need for the Backpack Buddy bags of food going out with the weekend. So just an FYI, I mean, the storehouse is there to serve them and we will have lots of food to serve. Probably going to have a bigger need for volunteers going forward because we can't keep up with, you know, we end at six PM on Monday night and we're still there at seven thirty. So, and what I noticed last night, working inside the storehouse was that people are on edge. I think they're, they're nervous. They're nervous about how they're going to continue to feed their families when rent's going up, gas is going up. So the crunch is really out there for people. So I'm very grateful that we have a good Human Services Commission that we do because we fund a lot of very necessary, necessary agencies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things as well, and I guess I'll keep in the theme of mental health. On this April's ballot, King County has placed a crisis care, King County Crisis Senator levy. So I think council should consider resolution to support potentially this, this levy. We'll have to get some more information. I know it's pretty quick, but I, I think the election's coming up very soon. It'll provide.
My apologies for jumping in. For anything that's on the ballot, speaking for or against it is, is problematic for use of public facilities. And that's something staff can, can discuss and bring, potentially bring back to council later.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on, last week, I, with a couple of others, was able to go to Horizon Elementary and got to read to fifth and sixth graders. And just spending, you know, thirty minutes with each class and reading books and hearing their take on the stories was really, really fun. It was kind of refilled and recharged some of my batteries. And afterwards, some people asked me, you know, well, you know, talking to the kids, what was the hardest question you got? You know, I expected they'd ask about how's city work or, you know, all these sorts of things. And no, I, I was asked who, who is my favorite superhero? So, no, it's totally fine. We're totally. That was, yeah, that was.
What was the answer?
Well, I had to think about the crowd, you know, what do I say? Do I tell them what they want to hear? Or do I say what I, so? I said Spider-Man's probably my, my favorite superhero. So anyway, it was a lot of fun. Tomorrow night is the RFA meeting. We are handing out lifesaving award tomorrow night, as well as having regular, kind of what we do, department updates. But it'll be, as we heard from Deputy Chief Pennwell, it'll be Chief Carson's first meeting as chief. So kind of a new era in the RFA. I'll just finish up with a couple of things. You know, we say it every time, but you know, the people that volunteer for our commissions are unbelievable. I mean, they really are unbelievable. You know, I'm just looking at their backgrounds and, and their experience and, and just this, I just, I just hope we never run that, that well continues to produce. It's just incredible that the people were getting so. And then while we were doing those interviews, I don't know if you, I was watching all of you and just honored to be sitting in that room with all of you. In, in helping facilitate and get people to help us keep this city going. So I just, I'm, I'm grateful to be part of this team. So for what it's worth. So, thank you. Oh, I'm going to pick one more. I'm going to pull a Joe here, and some of you already know this. But my daughter got into the University of Washington and, you know, we're we're hoping she decides to go there. We're waiting on a couple of other big-name schools as well. But we're, we're pretty darn proud of her. So, anyway, thank you. Yeah. Now I got to pay for it. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I wanted to talk about last week's book reading too. I read, I got to read the two separate fourth grade classes. It was really interesting how very, very different the personalities of those classrooms were. And it was just, it was fun to, fun to read to the kids and hear their interactions and, and it, I, it was really refreshing to, to go through that. Looking forward to next Tuesday at Crestwood Elementary, talking, it won't be reading, it'll be talking about city government and so forth. But another fun opportunity to engage with our youth, you know, as we talked about with, um, what Chuck talked about in the interview, was just getting them excited about what, what they can do to help them influence the future. Um, the other thing I did want to, um, comment on, there was a post on our city Facebook page, um, about a lady who likes to walk down the street and pick up litter and, you know, bless her heart, like, she's not the most nimble person, right? Um, but she's doing whatever she can do and every little bit helps. And I know that, um, the Girl Scouts did the litter cleanup, uh, a few weeks ago, I think. And, um, the Chamber had one earlier in the month and they're doing one at the end of the month. Covington Rotary is going to be doing a litter cleanup this Saturday. So I mean, I think it's, it's just a testament to the volunteers that we have in our commissions, the civic groups, just regular residents. You know, we're all in the same boat of anything that we can do to help make our community better in any little way. We're, we're a community of twenty-one thousand people. If everybody does just some little bit, just think of how much of an impact that we can make. You know, not just litter, but that's a part of it, we've got storehouse and all the other things. So, um, it just, it really just warms my heart to see everybody pulling together in such a fashion. Um, it's going to spread. It'll spread even bigger. We'll just be this one big, we'll call ourselves Lovington. Love the cover. It's great. We'll call it Lovington because we're so cool. So.
Is that our proposal for a new agenda?
No, well, no.
Now we're going to change our shirts.
Yeah.
No.
That's all she wants. She wants more shirts.
Anyway, just, I know there's been a lot of things going, heavy stuff up here today, but, um, lighten me up.
Thank you, Beth. Christina.
So I, I appreciate that actually a lot. Um, we do, we really have an amazing, it's, it's contagious. That's what's awesome. Um, somehow, somehow it's contagious that we, we're getting these amazing people drawn towards our commissions and their, oh, I'll leave that comment out. But I just, well, I'm honored, I'm honored to have the, um, privilege of interviewing these people. How do you say no? I don't, but just to these, um, selfless people, you know, get Chuck, everybody needs a Chuck in their life. Like every teenager needs a Chuck in their life. Um, and it's, it's absolutely amazing. Um, Joe, greatest condolences. I my son's thirteen. I don't know the eighteen-year-old, but just as a mother, like, there's so many parents that, that need to hear that, who need to have those conversations. Um, regardless of whether they know. On the brighter side, uh, we are having skip meeting this Friday. And for the first time in, well, I don't even know how long, it is in person. It's in Auburn and I'm really excited to be attending in person. Honestly, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm getting behind that wheel, excited, um, to, there's, I mean, we all know it's so, so different face to face. I, I feel like I finally get to meet the skip members who we've been doing this with for months, months. And I'm very excited about the sunshine we're getting now. We all need a vitamin D, makes everybody happier, probably crime decreases. That's probably why Kohl's isn't getting anything today. I mean, I'm just saying, that's, it's my theory, but I'm very honored to work with each one of you. Great for the city.
Thank you, Christina. Um, like Beth brought up, uh, next Tuesday, myself, Beth, Joe, and Christina will be there for one of the sessions. Uh, Crestwood reached out to me to, um, come and speak to their fourth grade agents, uh, for free classes. So, um, thank you, those of you that are, uh, going to join me, we want to keep it to three, otherwise we probably have one of you there and probably overpower the classes. So, um, but it's, it's nice to be able to do that. Uh, this Thursday is our Community Schools of Camp Breakfast fundraiser. Um, and that helps, that fundraiser goes to help communities and schools, help mentor those kids that need help, um, which can help with the kids that might be, uh, needing that extra help. Because those mentors can see when kids are struggling and help them get that extra help they need for mental health. Uh, we have HOA meetings starting this, uh, Thursday and next week. Uh, Chamber after hours this Thursday at the Rock. And then next Tuesday is the mayor's meetup and, uh, thank you to Beth and Sean for joining me next Tuesday. And then we're going to schedule one in May. I haven't got the date set up, but we'll do a morning one. Um, and that's, I'll reach out to whoever can join me at that, um, on a Tuesday morning in May. And, uh, like each you said, it is an honor to, uh, sit up here and work with each of you. It is not taken lightly um, by our residents that elect us to do the job and to make sure that we are doing the right job. And I really appreciate partnering with each of you and partnering with our staff. Um, we have an awesome staff and I'm not just saying it because you're sitting here and online. Um, you, very responsive, not just council members, but each of our residents. So, uh, that is greatly appreciated that the, um, customer care that is shown by our staff is above and beyond. So thank you, we could pass that on. And Chief, to each of the officers that I know go above and beyond, especially with some of the things I've seen that you've had to put up with, um, definitely thank you. Uh, that is all I have tonight, and so we'll go into our second, uh, public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine, raise your hands. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five 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 campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in city hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting is prohibited. If anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening, welcome. Come on up, state your name and whether you're a resident or not.
Yes, we are, uh, Paul and Dorothy Simons. Do we need to give you our address?
No, just if you're resident or not.
No, we are, uh, we are residents. We, uh, we had, um, um, what inserted, wrote in on to your Covington connects. We are very concerned about a piece of property that sits next door to us. Um, two, five, eight, two, nine, one fifty-second Avenue, Southeast Two in Covington. It is a piece of property that sat, uh, vacant for ten years and, uh, was very badly, um. Now, in twenty twenty, he's got people living in here without proper permits, without anything being up to code, except for, I think electrical, electrical is up to code. Yay, him. But he didn't do it. Um, and we are concerned. We are very, very concerned because we don't see compliance coming into compliance. And we see this legally binding stop work order from July twenty twenty and a commit by August twenty twenty and a firing because he doesn't pay for his contract and chooses not to be compliant. And our city allows this to continue to go on and on. He has got in this R one, single-family dwelling unit, eight single individuals who have nothing to do with each other.
And so some of these are children. Some of these, I should say, can be children. Over the last couple of years, they have been children.
There is no yard. It is debris. There's wires hanging up in the yard. No grass, nothing but trees, weeds and brush. Rails up next to the house. Decks that he put on that are not up to code. Our concerns here are that we have a property that runs a thriving business, renting eight unrelated people associated on the personal property that ends on single-lane roads, one which is private and unpaid. He has been a Scotland since he bought the property in January fourth, twenty nineteen. We are asking that these egregious violations, egregious, be addressed by this, by the laws according to the city of Covington. That is what we ask.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You have the address.
Be happy to, be happy to meet with that fire guy too.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody, uh, address council, no executive session tonight. This meeting is adjourned at eight oh two. Thank you all very much for being here and make sure you get with Regan. Regan is our city manager. Thank you.